The workshop of the Borough Mechanicsburg Council on February 2nd, 2021 to order. This is the meeting of the standing committees of Borough Council. The first item of business on the agenda is the approval of the committee minutes from the January 5th, 2021 meeting. Can I entertain someone to entertain a motion there?
I'll make that motion.
All right, that was Mr. Pellman and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Um, let's see, Sarah. Sarah was here. Sarah Martin, there you are. Sarah, we'll let you handle it.
Response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
There you go. Thank you very much. Hearing no negative response, the motion carries, so the minutes are approved. All right, we're going to begin with municipal and community outreach and we'll send that over to Mrs. Agerton.
So we have a meeting scheduled on the 23rd following the Community and Economic Development Meeting. We're shooting for 6:30 to 7:00.
Okay, very good.
We'll need to advertise that.
All right, you got that, Mr. Szczesny? All right, very good. Anything else?
That is it to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Agerton? Hearing none, we move on to Community and Economic Development. Mr. Miller.
Okay, so following up on that scheduled meeting, we are having the, we are scheduled to meet or we are going to schedule to meet on the 23rd of February at 6:00 PM. For the Community and Economic Development Committee, I checked with Ms. Yerick and she's available. Mr. Anthony is available and Ms. Agerton is available, so we're all on.
We lost them.
We're all on the same committee, so we figured it'd be convenient to lump that all into.
Very good.
I don't have anything else to report other than that would be, be great if we could have an update by that time on the progress with the comprehensive plan. Roger, if you want to ping them and let them know that we have a meeting.
All right, I, yes, I did. I have a scheduled, I have a scheduled meeting set up for them for Carolyn tomorrow. They're going to get a package together. We're going to go over what is there, what we see as the issues, and then they're going to present this. They'll make a package together for council and we can get it. Both of those meetings on the 23rd, so we can, we can hit those, both those meetings. Yep.
All right.
We'll have something to present.
All right, that's great. And so that's, that's all I have to report now for, for Community and Economic Development.
All right, and those meetings will be Zoom meetings, I presume?
Correct.
Okay, and will the rest of us be able to have access to that Zoom if we want to attend?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, we'll move on to Finance Administration and Ordinance. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you very much. So according to the agenda, we are discussing an update to the Borough Personnel Policy.
Correct.
So I guess I'll start with, has everybody had an opportunity to review the Borough Personnel policy changes that were sent out by the Borough Manager? There are three screens going and I can't see people nodding heads, so I'm going to assume that everybody has unless they haven't, but if they haven't, just kind of holler. Does anybody have any thoughts or concerns? Would you like to go through it page by page or would you like to talk about things you're concerned about? Hearing none, I have a couple of quick questions. First is looking for it now on the policy.
John, I'll let you go first. I do have a point on the anti-nepotism ordinance or the anti-nepotism policy that was crafted from the ordinance. So I'll just, I'll let you go with the points you have and then we'll talk about that.
All right, all right, very good. So one of my questions was, was tied to that, Kyle, so I will skip over that question and go to. First of all, I guess my question is, Roger, can you tell me, were you, did you make the changes and then we had Mike review that or did Mike make changes based on what you asked him to do? How did that, how did this work?
Mike's made, Mike has, Mike and his staff have reviewed this thing probably three times since we started talking about this. A lot of the comments that came from Renee in his office have already been incorporated into here for legal review, what we were looking for and I, because I wanted to set, I was looking to try to save a little bit of time and money and have him do the legal review first and have the comments made from the council and the committee. And then he could do one last, we can make the changes, he can do one last review and then get it over to council. I would, I was figuring on giving him a red line version like the original one I sent out to everyone so that he knew where to go. He didn't have to review the entire document all over again.
Right, right, right. Good, good. Okay, so on page seven where it says applicability, this sounds like a circular sentence to me, so I'm just curious. It says, "The policy does not apply to employees and their relatives who are already employed by the borough as of the effective date of the policy." Then it says, "This policy shall be applied, however, to all potential future hiring, potential promotions, transfers, assignments or reassignments of relatives of current employees." So it says it's not going to be applied to current employees. It is going to be applied to current employees. Not like it needs to maybe add a word to that line, that top line there. It says maybe that somehow it's not.
Yeah, this was actually in the, in the original email I sent out, we had, I told, said we had a, a problem in this, this section here. This was taken right out of the original anti-nepotism ordinance, the way it was. The, and Mike and Renee at Mike's office actually are the ones that pointed out this was, this was a, it was kind of the applicability, but it's unapplicable. So, you know, what do we drop here to, to make this thing enforceable? That's what I haven't highlighted on the copies that I sent out to you guys for your review, and that's, that's what I was getting at on this point. In the actual purpose, this policy will not derive any permanent employee, will not deprive any permanent employee as of date of adoption of this policy, any promotional right in the normal career development nor change the existing status of any permanent employee. It contradicts with the applicability clause.
Well, so long as that person is not going to be supervised by a relative.
Right, but with, that's where they, they may already be. That's the, you know.
They, they already be, right.
Correct.
We want to keep and allow to continue under a grandfather kind of clause, but we, but we still want to keep in that part where they would be any changes in their employment would, this new policy would apply to. I'm just asking the attorney to maybe craft that differently.
All right. Now, I will be honest with you, Mike, Mr. Cassidy has not looked at this. If I'm not mistaken, I think I sent him on December, the 23rd or 24th, when I sent this out to council, I think that's the first that I sent it to Mr. Cassidy. The Mike I've been referring to is Mike Miller.
Yeah, me too. I assume, I don't, I don't ever assume that we need to have two attorneys look at anything. I would assume that.
Okay. But I, I just, I wanted to clarify that though. I didn't, I, so.
Thank you. And that is, that is correct. I am deferring to Mike Miller and Eckert Siemens with respect to the review of this. I don't see any need to duplicate effort. But if there are any questions that you'd like to run by me, I'm happy to answer them, but, but my understanding is, is that the, the anti-nepotism provisions are intended to more or less maintain the status quo with respect to any family relationships that, that may currently exist within your staff. But any changes to the employment status of any of those employees, this anti-nepotism policy would apply. But that's my understanding, but again, I defer those questions really to Mike Miller and his staff.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Page 19 is just a comment, page 19 at the top where it says, "All complaints submitted to the Borough Council." "All complaints submitted to Borough Council must be timely." "Upon receipt of a complaint, the council shall immediately assign the personnel committee to investigate." So in my time on council, which I think is like six years now, I've not seen anything come through the personnel committee that I'm aware of, so we've had no complaints. Because it looks like we took a policy, a part of this policy, this recrafted the wording of it, because it was, it was stricken. I love the colors, by the way. Purple, bigger font, love that. Red, smaller font, not as much, but the, the different, the separate, so it looks like we recrafted it to be more appropriate. It's just a comment that it feels like we haven't had any employee complaints if this is the case, if we've been following policy.
No, we've been, if we, if we'd handled under, under executive session, if there would have been. The only, the last, the last one we had, the personnel policy handled and it never went any further than Personnel Committee.
Done. Oh, so it did go to Personnel?
It did, yeah, it went to Personnel Committee.
Uh, page 21.
That's why I'm not following you. I've got, I need the red line copy open. Hold on a second.
Yeah, I'm utilizing the red line copy.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't find what you were talking about on page 19.
This is a curiosity and it might, maybe the attorney can answer this, I don't know, but and actually I experienced this in my own life. So our insurance provider, we will, under our policy, provide insurance subject to whatever amount is due to be paid by the employee to or to a relative or a spouse, I guess, or a family of an employee, as it says it in here. As so long as they don't have other insurance available to them. How often do we go back and check that? I mean, is there a, you're proving a negative. So are we having them sign something every year that says, "I don't have available, my, my spouse doesn't have available insurance and so they're going to be on my policy?"
Yes, we sent out a spouse or death duration every November.
Perfect.
To every employee. That was provided by Mike Miller's office. We did not draft that in-house. It was provided by Labor Attorney.
And you're, you are right, we're trying to prove a negative there.
Yeah, I'm just looking for an affidavit from annually so that we have on record is all.
So you're suggesting that it should be like in clear verbiage in there, is that what you're saying? That the affidavit should be submitted every year? Like, should that be covered in the personnel policy?
That's actually covered under the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
I'll have to go look at that. And then the last thing that I think I have for this, besides what I think, I'll see if Kyle's going to hit the same thing. Councilman Miller is going to hit the same thing I was going to think about, but on page 25, I was looking at the, I just had a question as to why we eliminated number four. And Roger, I don't know if you covered that with, with Attorney Miller or not, but.
That, that is where that, that's where that strikeout came from. Yes. That was his suggestion to take it out of there. He did not give me any reason why it came back from them with that section struck out. I would assume, and this is, this is an assuming, the F L M, F M L A Act changed for some reason and the verbiage changed. Because that was one of the reasons why we sent it over to him, because he has people over there that are very, very familiar with the F M L A Act. And they, I think that's where this came from, is that came out of that, that change there.
Yeah, so it's striked, it's written and stricken twice. I would ask him only to maybe to give us a couple of words as to why he strikes things out, when he strikes them out. If it's just, hey, we're striking this because the law changed, that's cool, but I read it like four times trying to figure out where it was replaced or what was going on. It'd be a lot easier for us to.
Which, you're talking about number four?
Yeah.
Like change notes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. Councilman Miller, I think that was all I had for right now. You had something else?
Well, mine, yes, mine was, I'm trying to find the page here. It's page seven if you're following. It's basically trying to reconcile the ordinance, which was drafted and this copy that was inserted and it states that the, in the purpose, the provisions of this policy outlines the permitted hiring practices with respect to relatives of municipal employees or elected or appointed officials defines the meaning of relative and provides for restrictions of application of the policy. Problem is it does not do that. The ordinance did, but the policy does not.
Right.
The definition section was removed, so it's, I I'd be interested in to hear whether or not from Mike, well, either Mike, I'm not sure, whether whether or not we need a definition section or whether we just strike that from the purpose.
What part? Wouldn't we almost need a definition? Because then, like, how is it enforceable if there's no definition of what a relative is?
Well, it becomes quite broad because then it's basically every blood relative, which is late, is mentioned later.
Blood, marriage or adoption. I mean, they're all, it covers all of those.
It covers all of those. It becomes quite broad, whereas the one that was in the ordinance was a narrower definition, so.
I would suggest defining that term in the policy.
So we should, we should look at adding that back in. Roger, that definition. I'm not sure what my suggestion would be on the conflict there with the purpose section and the applicability. I know that the applicability section is typical in, in ordinance. And the reason it was done was like Mr. Cassidy said, was to maintain the status quo. And that an ordinance can be applied to all potential fewer, future hiring, promotion, transfer. So I'm not sure how much authority the personnel policy has over potential future hiring, being that those candidates are, are not technically employees yet of the borough. But I could see it applying to promotion, transfer, you know, assignment or reassignment of relatives. Just as so long as they're not managed by their blood relative, which maybe that is where the edit to the clause comes in at that, at the end to clarify.
Yeah, my interpretation of that was that, to your point, Kyle, was that it's a guide for future employees to know that when they become an employee that they, they will be having to follow these policies. So that's why I think.
Well, to that, to that point, although I, you know, to any job that I've applied to, I've never received the personnel policy at my interview. Which is why I advocated for the ordinance, but in order to fix this, I, I'm really not sure what the best course of action is, so.
Well, could it be covered as like somebody that currently is employed, like cover it on the end of our current employees rather than the people applying, whereas like the, the hiring professionals that are making the decision are not, are like restricted from hiring people that they're related to, like whereas we can actually like, where the personnel policy would cover them, but not the people that are applying. That makes sense?
That does make sense. Yeah, maybe it could be worded differently to address that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Does that make sense, Roger?
Yes, it does. Uh, so basically it's, it would be, all right, I've, I know the gist here. I'm, I'll have Mike, I'll send something over to Mike, tell him what it is that we're looking for. Then before we go too much further down the road, as soon as he gets back to me, I'll send it out to you. And you guys can go over it, at least the Personnel Committee can, or the, the Ordinance Administration Committee can go over it, see if that's the intent that you're looking for, and then I'll add it into the policy. I just want to make sure we capture your intent there completely. So it's basically anybody that's doing the hiring, that you want this section directly, the applicability section directed toward anybody doing the hiring.
Well, we wanted to, to match with the the other, the purpose section. And we want it to clarify the applicability that the, it's, it can be applied to those hiring, those doing the hiring versus future, versus those future employees, because they're not, in this case, they're not the decision makers and they're not, they're not technically under the personnel policy yet.
Correct. So we'd have to make that state that the department heads, because even though the hiring, you know, Glenn and I would be doing most of the hiring, you want that to mean that we don't, we don't want to hire Curtis's daughter to work at the sewer plant with is basically what it amounts to. Because we would be doing the hiring, the same way with the codes official. Now, the coach, the official answers directly to me. I would be managing him, but, or her in that case, but if we were to hire somebody for the highway garage, we want to make sure that he's not related to C H or Scott, who is the foreman at the, at the highway garage.
I would just say, let's have Mike, just tell Mike our concerns and then let him, let see what he suggests as far as what the, the best wording is for that.
Okay.
All right, folks, is there anything else that we need to talk about relative to the personnel policy update? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Roger. Number two is a discussion on return to regular meeting schedule and office hours for the borough. I was hoping we weren't on regular scheduled meetings, so could you hit me with what you thought about that?
In person, I believe, is what.
In person, I believe.
Yeah, that's what the intent was there. This was one of those, those sections that was written and Glenn and I were in passing, so. The, getting back to a regular virtual or not a, a non-virtual in-person meeting and this is kind of where I wish Nate was on to discuss what his outlook looks like going forward. But with the COVID being the way it is, we've been running the office as by appointment only. People, there's a doorbell out front, they can come up, they can ring the doorbell if they, they really need to get, you know, to see something. We have not had a lot of people set appointments. And in the same way with deliveries and stuff like that. So that's what we were kind of, where do we want to go? To the point that we want to open the office back up. Personally, I feel that the numbers are still relatively high, that I think we should be by appointment only here. However, I think we could have, we had a planning commission meeting the other night in person. And there were, there wasn't, there was one extra, one person in the audience. And in situations like that, we've been asking them to, like, it was just for the school district. We asked them to limit the amount of people they brought to the planning commission meeting. And Scott, you were there, you saw what, what that looked like. We were all spread out around the table. Now, if we were to go back to an in-person meeting and we're still under some kind of COVID restrictions, I think there's certain people that we would ask to either sit in the audience or not attend to keep the staff numbers down. Some of those would be perhaps, you know, Chief Myers, Chief Neff, Engineer Rogowski, only if he was needed, which would probably really upset him, but you know, there's a, there's a few that we could, we could have there, but we wouldn't really need them there unless we had an absolute question. So that way we would, we would open it up for more participation from the, from the public if they wanted to be there.
My, go ahead. Let's let Sarah talk first.
So from my healthcare perspective, you know, I, I love to be the doom and gloom, but we have a new strain that's more contagious. And my thought is, is do we not feel that these Zoom meetings are eliciting participation? Sometimes I think we may even have more participation from the community on our Zoom meetings. If we would move to in-person in the future, could we do a hybrid model so that we could still have participation from these members and, and be able to have it? Because what I don't want to do is move to a meeting where we limit the amount of people that want to participate because of the, the fear of spread. We still are not, I mean, we are nowhere near where we want to be with the vaccination and I'm sure Nate will back me up on that. And with the new strain coming through, it does worry me a little bit to think that we have passed, you know, any landmark with getting back to normal.
I agree. I agree with Sarah. I agree with Sarah in that it does seem like the cases are still too high and that with the new strain running, you know, its course now seems to be spreading. And vaccine distribution not not happening quick enough. I think it's best that we continue Zoom meetings for now and probably at least until the spring. We can reconsider, but I would advocate for continuing Zoom. I know that other municipalities are still doing Zoom and even last year they continued doing Zoom even in the summertime. Because it does allow, like Sarah said, it allows, when properly advertised, it allows for people's participation and it eliminates that barrier of the fear of coming into council meeting and and so from that perspective and, you know, I could see a hybrid model like Sarah suggested in the future, but I think I think for now we should continue.
I would suggest that we go month to month and, on the decision on that. We get to this portion. Sorry, John, don't want to take your, give you your agenda, but each time we reach this point in our, in our workshop meetings, we can, we can throw discussion in if necessary. It, it is difficult to get the, the vaccine. Hopefully they'll get that straightened out in the next month or so, and that may change things, but I, I would agree with both previous comments. I think we probably ought to, much to my chagrin, I, I think we should probably stick with it.
My other, my other question too is you said that you're suggesting that we go back to the regular office hours without appointments.
No, I wasn't, no, 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 no. I wasn't suggesting that. I was looking for, and this is where I was saying, I hope, I wish Nate was here to clarify what his outlook is looking like, but Sarah, Sarah is, is getting as much, if not more information than what Nate's getting, so, since he's changed jobs, but we are open by appointment only. That means, now, we did, this week, we started with all the ladies back in the office just to answer phone calls and keep things going. The coordination on our end from everybody working at home at different places was getting a little more difficult. Especially when we're getting into the billing and getting into the, the audits coming up. So Glenda's not going to be as available on the floor as what she usually is, so. I think if.
Roger, I would just add that as long as you can keep proper social distancing and, you know, our company has a policy, the six-foot office. And it is, if, when the essential employees go in, they have to wear their masks whenever they're not at their desk and maintain social distancing at all times.
Yep.
And, you know, the borough's not going to have this, but we have an app, like if an employee has to go in, we have an app that we have to check in on prior to coming into the office.
We have, we have the thermometers and stuff and we're, you know, we, we keep an eye on things and as soon as, as soon as I hear anything from any other department, I'm telling them, they say, they're, they're not to come in here at all unless they use the back door here and come directly into my office, so.
I would hesitate though at opening up for public and keep it appointment only, so that you can properly screen people prior to coming in.
That's what, that's what I was getting at. I was like, we can very well say that we're going to be continuing on Zoom and then have you guys put yourself at risk. Like I, so that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to cut you off, Joe. I apologize. That's, so. No, that's what I was looking for. Thank you. If that is the committee's wishes, we will continue with the way we are right now. I will have the ladies in here to, to take care of things and then we'll proceed from there.
It looks like Chief Myers has her hand up.
Yeah, I see that. That's, okay, are you going to unmute or are you just playing with your phone?
I'm actually going to talk if I can figure out how to do that.
I'm actually gonna talk if I can figure out how to do that.
Well, you're talking, we're hearing you.
They are doing hearings, preliminary hearings. And hearings on traffic violations. Citations. At the district magistrate's office over Zoom. Um, so. I think that with the county being closed. DJ's office isn't letting anybody in doing everything via Zoom. Um, unless of course there's a prisoner involved, but that's. Mostly by by Zoom, I think it's a good idea to keep. Keep that kind of thing where what what we're doing. Because um. From what I'm getting information wise, this spring is going to be no better. If not worse, um, so. I'm thinking the month, month is okay, but. Um, realistically, I was also told that. Even when you're vaccinated, you can still get COVID, same way as with the flu shot, so. The vaccines are not going to be a. The no all end all to everything either. So.
That is correct. The vaccine will just make you get it less, so you will not be having the symptoms quite as bad, but you can be a carrier. And what they're suggesting is that you are wearing a mask. Um, you know, if you don't have an N ninety five mask, that you're wearing a double mask, like a hospital mask and a cloth mask over top. Um, so it is important that people are wearing proper masks. Keeping that social distance because it is not going to fix it, it will definitely help it. And it will prevent you from getting as sick, so they are suggesting, you know, anyone over sixty five, anyone that has any lung issues. That those are the folks that really need to get it, um, because it is a lower lung infection, so people who are prone to pneumonia. That they're the ones that will get hit the hardest when they get it, so. You are absolutely right, and the pronatory and the orphan courts are all doing virtual um hearings too, so. Uh, I I think we're right on. With everyone else, there's no question about keeping everything virtual and appointment.
All right, unless I hear any other comments, I think we have pretty much a unanimous thought process on that, so I believe that's it for our finance administration and ordinance committee. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony, appreciate that. Okay, personnel, I'm going to defer to Sarah.
Sure, um, wait, um, Rodney has not been feeling so well, so we are getting ready to have our first meeting. Um, I will follow up with him later on this week to see how he's feeling. Um, we do have to get our heads together so we can come back and talk to you guys about, you know, setting goals and um, being able to do reviews with um borough staff. But we are just the very beginning process of it and we will get together as soon as Rodney's feeling up to it, so I apologize, I know that we wanted to do it. Um, the end of last month, but we just weren't able to get together yet.
Okay, any questions for Sarah? Okay, moving on, um. Property parks and recreation, that is also Mrs. Agerton.
Um, so. I don't have any updates other than we do have a massive meeting tomorrow night um with a whole bunch of people, thank you, John. And to Sarah for getting all of this scheduled, um, we'll be working on the hundredth anniversary and the community day planning. That will be coming up in August, so um. That will be a Zoom meeting, it'll be the first, I'm sure, of many meetings to get things kicked off. And then we also, I sent out an invite, we will be scheduling a meeting in March. Um, just waiting to hear back from everyone on the committee so that we can get that on the calendar and I'll send out an invitation that you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Agerton? Hearing none.
That is a public.
I'm sorry.
That is a.
Yes, it was, yes, it was advertised, it is a public meeting.
So we should really be putting that link on the on the website and the Facebook page for people to join. If they were to sign up to join.
If they, yes, if they want to.
Because that's the only way, I mean, that people can attend, so we're happy option of attending. Then I only had one other, one other uh item for that was the the list that the. Rec board made for park improvements. Could you, Roger, could you forward that to us?
Yes, I gotta get that out to everybody, that was something that you asked about before and I have not, and I failed to get that out to everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, before we go off of that property parks and recreation, I will. Um, I've reached out to a few different consulting firms about the safety precautions we may have to do to open the pool this year with COVID in effect the way it is. There were some, our insurance company is one of those that has a consulting consultant that will provide us with ideas of what we can do and what we need to do. I think, and this is something that we're going to discuss at rec meeting next week. Decide or make a few decisions so that they can recommend the council action on. Opening up to pool passes and. Um, only uh, opening up to pool passes and walk-ins. Uh, summer adventure camps, how we want to handle that situation and the concession stand, I think there's, those four things are probably the biggest. Questions that we have hanging over um, the amount of people that are in the pool at one time, so. Uh, if we still have limits as to how many people can be allowed in there. I think we're going to have to make a decision, do we do pool passes in residence or do we do? Summer adventure camp, because there's times that we can have very many. Many, many kids in there, and I think that's going to push us way over the limit. With summer adventure camp, I don't, I still have to follow up with Tanya. On how many she's looking at for summer adventure camp, but um, that could be a a major problem. Coming down the road, so just to keep that in everybody's heads, um, next Tuesday when we meet with, when rec meets, we're going to have that discussion.
And to that point, I believe Hampton's already started selling pool passes.
We have two, but uh, we're optimistically selling them.
Which means?
Which means we're.
It means you're gonna do everything we can to get that pool open.
Okay.
Everything we can, right, Roger? Even if we have to get creative. We we've got it, we've got, we have to have some sunshine this summer.
We sure do.
We need a bottom in it first.
Yeah, we gotta get the bottom in and get it painted first, right?
Well, we'll get, I promise you, we'll have a bottom in it, but this, this. Tomorrow's not the day.
The foot is snowing it right now.
Before we move on, I I did remember something else I wanted to ask, and that was the uh. Natural playground. Uh, was everything completed with that and did we fulfill all of our grant? Requirements?
Our grant has been extended due to COVID, COVID for another twelve months. So we're in good shape with that. There is one thing outstanding yet, um, that is the bridge and. Uh, we didn't put the classroom benches out yet, they're still. Um, they're still sitting over. Actually out at the sewer plant, put together, there's just a matter of getting them out there and putting them in. Last couple months have been. Pretty tight, but we've got everything ready to go except for the bridge and that, the bridge falls on me. Um, I designed it, I cut it out, it's up to me to put it together because I don't have the instructions written down on how to put it together.
Okay. So we're in good shape though.
Yeah. Yes.
Anything else for uh, Mrs. Agerton? Okay, moving on, public works and safety, Mr. Pellman.
Okay, I think both the topics that we'll discuss tonight will be things that uh. Roger suggested, which is the condition of the borough vehicles and the use of brine in our combating snowfall situations.
Uh. So Roger, yeah. Okay, I can take it from there, yeah, the. The borough vehicles that we have as far as at the highway garage, we took. Actually, we had um. Yesterday, we had an overheating dump truck, one of the large ones, uh, one of our mainline trucks went down. Uh, it also went down again today with no brakes in it, so we got it back, it still was running a little hot, so we know that there's something else wrong with it. Um, one of the other trucks that we're using, the mainline truck, has apparently never worked from the day we had it. I don't know why it was never returned, it was never given, you know, to adjusting or anything like that, but. Um, I gave instructions that once we get out of the spring, uh, into the spring here and we're, we don't have to worry about snow anymore. I want those two trucks gone over, um, they're very, they're the large trucks we have. They are our mainline trucks and they need to be functioning. Um, at the full capacity when come time for the snow plow and the and uh, anything else we're using them for in the winter. Um, so those two are the big ones, the other ones are the small trucks. I did get a few prices, I didn't get all the prices I was looking for, um, and I did not include them. In the packets that went out, so I'm going to have to send those out, I will send those out with a with a memo. Uh, for council, so we have them at the next meeting. I did talk to L B Smith Ford, uh, who is a co-stars dealer. Uh, to get two replacement pickup trucks, one for the sewer plant, one for the borough office, or not the borough office, for the highway garage. Um, we have. The one truck we took out of service, um, last two weeks ago, we actually had to bring it back into service today to to plow snow with. I don't like the fact that we're running an uninspected truck on the roads, but um, we didn't have a choice today. So the uh. The other one is, the sewer plant has has a uh, truck that has the floors completely gone, it will not pass inspection. We took it out of service completely. Um. So they're down to one basic. Pickup truck for them to to use for different utility stuff at the sewer plant, so. I'm going to get an entire inventory of where we're at with our vehicles. To see where we're going, there's, we know coming up, there's a couple other trucks that are not going to pass inspection. Um. And we have another small dump truck that is not going to, this is the one that two years ago, the frame broke. Uh, we had it repaired and uh, there's other issues with it now that. It just will not, it's not going to pass the next time we take it out for inspection, so we're going to be down two trucks basically. Um, here, once the, once the snow is done and over with. And we're going to be looking at that, so I'm looking at. Uh, I've also got uh, one of the assignments I gave the highway. Department, um, the public works department, uh, the new director. Was to start looking at what trucks he has, what trucks we can, we can keep running and then start a rotation plan. Um, this was started probably ten, fifteen years ago. And it kind of fell through. Um, there were some communication errors between personnel in this office and the highway garage. That's, that's a personnel issue we can get into later, but um, the, the whole thing is, there's a lot of stuff that we're finding out now. That we did not know was the problem at the highway garage, so. To the point that there's, there's some major problems out there. Um, and we're getting them worked on, one of them is the heat, the other one is the electrical panel that's on the bot, on the agenda tonight. So we're getting there, it's just, there's a lot of stuff coming to light as to where we're at.
I'd really like to see a comprehensive vehicle replacement plan before we move forward with any sort of purchase on this front. So that we know um, what needs replaced now. And what needs replaced in the future and when. And um. Yeah, that's, that's just, I'd like to see some sort of plan put together, so I'm encouraged to hear that you ask them to to look into that.
Well, I'm also working on that too with the the multi-purpose truck, um. And looking at what we can do with that. Um, that kind of falls in line with the with the brine. Uh, situation that kind of dovetails right into that section because. I'm looking at a truck that that we can use, um, a flatbed, it has the leaf vacuum. Um, there's a few other situations, things that we can use it for. Um, it depends on what we do, what cassette basically we put on the back of it. There are many trucks out there that are available with this, and if you talk to the builders of the, the equipment. Um, they can make any, just about anything fit on the back of this, to the point, um, I don't know. You've, you've, you've probably all seen the green truck that we use with the the bucket on it to put the Christmas trees up. Um, that truck took thirty four hundred dollars this year to pass inspection. So there's, the truck's not worth much more than maybe eight thousand dollars. So there's uh. There's, there's coming of time, coming, going to come a point in time where we're going to be nickel and diming. Ourselves and putting more money into these vehicles than they're actually going to be worth at a trade-in. Um, the truck they put back in service today did not have that, so. What I'd like to do is get a chassis with the, the ability to use it on different things so that we're not, we don't have as many trucks. We just have different packages to put on the back of the truck to use it. Uh, one of the things I'm looking for is the, is the bucket to go on the back of that. Uh, as a package so that. When they're doing Christmas trees or doing the the Christmas decorations. Um, and they have to go out and pick up leaves, it's a matter of a couple minutes of changing from the, from the bucket truck to the, to the leaf vacuum and then they could be back out to work again, so. With having a snowplow on the front of it. And then also a flatbed with the brine system on it, um, we did. Any que, uh, let's, let's, any questions before I go into the second part of that?
I think there's merit in that, but have you looked into also? Like, we only need a bucket truck, like, maybe one, one week out of the year. Maybe during that period of time we could rent a truck for less than it would cost us to buy the piece of equipment.
Actually, if I can interrupt, that's not actually true. Uh, yeah, we do use it for that, but I just was by the highway garage the other day and they were using the bucket truck to repair something on the roof. Um, if, if, I think we should have a bucket truck in our fleet. Because there's, there's, there's those occurrences when in an emergency situation, you don't have time to go rent a truck. And if it can be something that can be attached on to an existing vehicle. It doesn't cost us a whole lot more money and it's easy for the guys to hook up if needed, I think it'd be wise to to be able to cover that. Again, uh, uh, this comprehensive plan that that you have these guys putting together should address that.
Yep.
And then we can discuss that later.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was also, I was reviewing the uh, vehicle list that you sent in October. Um, and it's uh, says that we have nine trucks at the highway garage. Uh, and we, and the, so our most recent purchases were two twenty twenty Fords, an F uh, F five fifty and an F three fifty. Uh, the, the ones that you were referring to that that need to be taken out, uh, which are those ones? Or like, if you resend that list, would you be able to like, put a note in as to the condition?
Yeah, let me pull up what I sent you because I, I know which ones they are, I know them by truck number.
That's, that's fine, i- if you, if, if you provide uh, as part of your like uh, vehicle rotation, if you provide like a, a condition section too that we can review.
That would scare you.
Well, I mean, if if you're saying that we need new trucks, I think it would be helpful to, as far as decision making goes and options.
Okay, I can do that.
I have a question too, and I'm not sure where it falls in between these two dots, but have we ever considered or priced now outsourcing snow removal?
Not that I know of.
No. I, I don't know, I mean. I'll put it this way, for the one night that we did it on Main Street for two trucks and the drivers. That was over fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive for snow removal, I know that.
Well, I don't know how that relates in cost to the cost of having our folks out there, the insurance that they carry versus the insurance that we have, the damages that happens or doesn't happen. The trucks that we may or may not be able to eliminate because we don't need to have snow plows on the front of them, I'm just asking the question, that's all.
Good question, and I guess the other question is. It would be possible to look at down the road in the future at some sort of. You know, if it, if we're outsourcing, also look at some sort of municipal agreement with a, with a neighbor. To, to take on.
Well. An area. Problem, the problem with that is we're going to be second fiddle. They're going to make sure their township's taken care of before they send anybody in town here. And that's a, I mean, this, this is, this is something your residents are paying for, they're going to want. You know, I mean, we could, we were, we can be much more reactive if we have our own staff that take care of this.
The other thing is, over the years, while, while it seemed like a good thing to to keep some of this old equipment on the road. It got to the point where, where it, it negated the ability to set up a plan. Like we're looking at now so that we can keep a rotation, which is is more cost effective to us as a, as a borough. And we get to give the services that our taxpayers are paying for.
Yeah, just asking the questions, so it's just ideas and, you know. Providing the services that that the residents pay for and the quality of service that they expect.
Which I think we're trying to do now. With, with patchwork equipment. They've done a good job.
You're right, and I think that goes into, that actually goes into the second point too of, of dealing, of working something out with Monroe Township on the brine. All we would have to do is, is, is have the brine, the applicator. They have the machinery that would, would generate the brine. They will sell it to us for twenty-three cents a gallon. Which is actually the cost of the electricity to make it. They're using, they're pumping it out of a well. They're mixing it with solar salt and they're using it to much success on their, I think they have three or four times the amount of roads that we have. And they're putting it down three to four days ahead of time, so that the stuff's not sticking as well. Even Monday morning, whenever C H and Scott came in, they drove up Allen Street here, the side that was sprayed a week ago. Still showed signs of not holding the ice as much as what the other side, as what the side closest to the borough office did. So the stuff's effective even after a week and a rainstorm in there, I believe. So there's, there's an opportunity there. We can actually build the, the actual, all we have to buy is the tank and a pump. We can actually build it and plum everything together. That is, there's also the opportunity out there that you can go out and purchase a, a vinyl tank with all the vinyl sprayers. So you don't have to deal with corrosion. The thing should last forever as long as it's, you know, not backed into or something like that. But we can have one person on one truck, take care of the whole borough instead of sitting around waiting for the, the snow to get to the point where they can spread salt on the roads. Because you spread salt on a dry road, it just bounces around. The cars brush it off. Where if you do the brine system, it's down, it's there, it sticks. And like I said, unless it rains, it's gonna be there whenever the snow comes. The state's using it, everyone around us is using it. It's cutting down on the use of salt. It uses probably a quarter of the salt that we usually use. I mean, we're, we're down quite a bit on our salt right now. They've gone through, in the last two snows, they've gone through almost a hundred and sixty tons of salt. So we're pretty, we're hurting right now for salt. We've gotta get some delivered.
Would this, would the brine, like, I know you said that they throw down salt, like, before snow sometimes. I know when, when you update us about snow removal. Would the, would spraying the brine during their regular working hours end up affecting the bottom line of our, the cost of snow removal at all or?
Yes.
What are the, like, would you be able to provide specifics about those numbers?
You're dealing with nature. It's hard to tell. I mean, like, this one, this snow here, they were sitting around most of the day waiting for enough snow to get out there to plow. They were out salting, but there wasn't enough snow to actually, to plow. They were, they were waiting for it to build up to the point that made it worthwhile to go out and plow off. The problem with it is when you put the salt down, you know, and you've got snow on the roads, then you go out a couple of hours later and you're plowing the salt back off. So you gotta give the salt time to work. So there's a, there's a variable in there. It's, it's going to cut our salt costs. It's gonna cut our manpower because we're not gonna need, you know, seven trucks out there trying to cover the entire borough at one time. We can do it with one truck. And we can plan ahead. When we hear the forecast, they're calling for this stuff, we can get the guy out there on the roads to take care of the stuff. It's, it's more of a pro planning than it is reactionary.
Well, and Roger, the, the other thing I wanted to, with using less salt, I would assume it's better for the environment too. Okay, so I know from my, from my drive from Mechanicsburg to Pass the Holy Spirit Hospital, the roads that are brined, they're brined ahead of time and they are much clearer. So, you know, I'm a big advocate for cutting down and we can use, I think Joe's right. We can have these folks doing it during the regular workday, not paying so much money on overtime at night. I think it's gonna save, and it's probably gonna save the equipment too, from the plowing.
Yeah. Well, it plays, it, it plays into that fact of, of, you know, we're, we're planning ahead now. We're not just waiting and sitting, waiting on Mother Nature to decide when it's gonna start snowing. We can plan ahead, get this stuff done through the day. It cuts down on the overtime. It cuts down on the people sitting around, just waiting for that, waiting to go out. Because we're paying them when they're sitting around waiting.
And we, can we use beet juice eventually?
If you find me a supply, if you find me a supplier with beet juice, we'll use it, because it's much better on the environment than the salt is.
Perfect. I'll find you a beet farm.
All right, any, any other discussion on, on that? So with that in mind, prior to calling the Borough Council meeting to order, I just want to review that the rules and procedures for the virtual meeting are posted on the website and I believe in the waiting room for those who want to attend these meetings. There are several things for guests, if we have any, that I'd like to review very quickly. Public microphones will be unmuted to make comments during the public comment sections of the meeting on an individual basis. This will be done so the comments can be clearly heard by all. The public can use the raise your hand feature of the software and their microphone will be unmuted for them to comment. Members of the public must state their name and address before proceeding with their comment. And lastly, if a comment, a commenter would like to have their comments in the minutes unabridged, they must submit those to the borough office in writing. That being said, I would like to call this Borough Council meeting of Mechanicsburg Borough, February second, twenty twenty-one to order. We will begin with the pledge to the flag. I happen to have my little flag here again. So it, it, it would be best if you all mute your things temporarily because it never lines up quite right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may unmute your mics. Roll call. This is Martin. I'm here.
Vice President Miller.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Aggerton.
Yeah.
Councilman Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Booker.
Here.
Councilman Pelman.
Here.
Mayor Ritter. He's there.
He's here.
Engineer Rigalski.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Chief Ness.
Here.
EMC Wardle, she on the next page?
No, he's not here.
Okay, thank you. Manager Scizarski.
Here.
And Assistant Manager Boyer.
Yeah. You're the quine.
Thank you. Mr. Scizarski, are there any guests this evening?
No, sir, there are no guests this evening.
All right, are there any citizen comments or requests? I'm not seeing any, so we will move on to correspondence.
I have no correspondence, sir.
Thank you. All right, we need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Aggerton. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. It's been moved in second, and is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a, a change to the way that the minutes are written, please. And the, the bottom of page three, it says, Councilman Booker requested meeting minutes to be sent in a different format so he can alter them. Staff stated that, that that can be provided. I just think the word alter kind of is, has a negative connotation. And I just asked if I could take notes, so I would appreciate if that's reflected in our minutes.
Okay, did the PDF work for you?
Yes, that was perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That is exactly what I was looking for.
Okay.
I think the, I would, I would change my second if the minutes are amended to reflect that Councilman Booker, his intent was not to, to alter the, the minutes, but to
Make notes on them.
Be able to make notes virtually on his draft copy.
Mrs. Aggerton, you amend your motion as well. The motion has been amended and properly seconded to reflect Mr. Booker's comments. Unless there's further discussion, we'll ask Mrs. Martin to call for the question.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the vote as unanimous.
And the minutes are approved. Engineers report, Mr. Rigalski.
Mr. President, the only item I have this evening is later on related to the pool coating projects. We'll have some discussion about that.
All right, thank you very much. And we move on to community liaison reports, downtown partnership, Mrs. Aggerton.
We continue to meet monthly. We will be having a joint meeting tomorrow with the rec board and John Anthony and members of the community for Community Day and the hundredth anniversary of soldiers and sailors. I do want to just say that, that the partnership continues to be creative and promoting our businesses downtown. So if you have an opportunity to check out their Facebook page, please like them and look at their posts. I think they, they've been very effective at helping our downtown businesses and highlighting them. That is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Aggerton? Hearing none, we'll move on to the library, Mr. Pelman.
Okay, well, fundraising efforts at the library are as important as ever, especially in the same age of COVID. So nicely, in the month of February, the, the friends of the Mechanicsburg Library are hosting a, a dine-out. And this will be at Haas's on the Gettysburg Pike, Wednesday, February tenth, from eleven AM to nine PM. And up to twenty-five percent of your meal will go to friends of the Mechanicsburg Library. And this is for dine-in or takeout. I think they, one of the reasons they're holding this is it's, you know, we're backed up to the higher capacity of people that are allowed to dine in now. The Simpson Library is selling T-shirts in an effort to raise forty thousand dollars this year. There's a logo on the front and a quote on the back of each of the T-shirts. They have youth and adult sizes, long sleeve or short sleeve. And they range in price from thirteen to nineteen dollars. You can purchase a T-shirt at the main desk, order for one online, or buy them at the book sales. And speaking of book sales, there is a February book sale, Saturday, February thirteenth, from nine to two. And the bag sale, Sunday, February fourteenth, from one to three. And that's at their one fourteen North York Street address. I've talked about three fundraisers real quickly. A different and unusual kind of happening at the library will be held on Monday, February eighth. It's African Safari from Home. In this age of Zoom, this is a Zoom session. It's like, it's not a Zoom session. It's a live webinar. And it's presented by AAA Travel. And so you can register online for that and see what a safari in Africa is like from the comfort of your home. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pelman? Hearing none, we'll move on to museum association. Things are going along the same with everything at the museum with regard to COVID and not being able to do any public projects. However, I can update you that the gardens project with the electricity is finally in. And so we now have heat in the little building and can turn the water on, so that if we do have an event, we will have the ability to wash the dishes and have people use the bathroom if necessary. The fence will be going in sometime in February, hopefully be done in early March. And the Eagle Scout project will begin in, in, hopefully, if the weather holds in March. And the three gardens will be in, trees will be planted, benches will be placed, and we'll be button, buttoning up the project down there. So if you've been by to see it, it's looking good and we're real happy that we're gonna now finally get the use of that facility. That's all I have at this time. So if no one has any questions, I'll turn the program over to Rebecca Yerick. I believe you're here somewhere, Rebecca.
I am. I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I want to especially say hello to Solicitor Cassidy, who I am more familiar with from another fine community. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Rebecca.
We approved five about-face grants for different businesses and properties in downtown. One of those includes a property that's been on our radar, the radar for a number of years. That's sixteen through twenty West Main Street includes fantastic Chef de Crepe and the Laundromat. The Laundromat may be receiving a different grant specifically for their storefront. They've been wanting to do some different things here for quite a while. Sheila Frank Bridle opened at fifty West Main, so she returns to the unit she originally leased several years ago and is very happy to do so. Someone already mentioned, I believe, the Larson Meadworks. Nate Larson has vacated that space. And it will be available next week. I have contacted some particular business, types of businesses who might be interested. And I'm gonna do a broader post to let people know that that is available. Someone had mentioned the possibility of a distillery. They could not have a distillery, well, working still works there because there are residential units in that building. And that's a, no, no, can't do that. Four hundred West Main Street is where Greenawalt accountants were. That building is under contract and will settle by the end of February. And lastly, Borough Manager Scizarski contacted me earlier this week to see what I knew about the light posts in the Strawberry Alley Municipal Parking Lot. And this goes back about seven years, but you may recall that we had those light posts painted. And then banners hung on Main and Market Street at forty-eight different locations. Those are the downtown banners that speak to our history and our specialty shops and so forth. I have a little over three thousand dollars left from those original grants. The, the last one is from the Mechanicsburg Club, and I would be more than pleased to contribute that to an effort to replace the two downed streetlight posts in the parking lot at Strawberry Alley. The remaining funds were expressly for maintenance, so that's a perfect fit and would be able to utilize those funds available right now. So I'll be looking into that, and that's everything that I have. Business is brisk. Anything for me?
Thank you for looking into that, Rebecca. That was one of my questions to the Borough Manager. And it would be nice to see them replaced and not use those trashcans. My question for you, Rebecca, is can we steer the distillery towards the bag processing facility? What's, what's the name of that?
Lumby's?
Yeah, Lumby's.
I got word that may be under contract for someone else. Yep.
I, I don't know. I don't know. I, I'm working with a bunch of brewers right now, a couple of distilleries and, and several wineries, and they're all across the, the board. Some of them will make things happen and others will evaporate.
Understand. They, so changing industry.
Rebecca, to that question, what happened to Larson's? Did he move or did he just simply close?
It was a multifaceted departure. It was, it was not COVID related.
Okay. It's too bad. He will be missed.
Yeah, he'll be missed.
Anything else for Rebecca? The Hefu Council, thanks again for all you do for us. We appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Moving on, are there any additions to the agenda?
I have two, and I'm gonna defer the one to Mr. Cassidy, Solicitor Cassidy. The executive session on a matter of personnel with potential action can be removed from the agenda. Solicitor Miller felt that next, the next council meeting would be a better time to discuss that.
Okay.
And the other one concerns the first item on the agenda, and Solicitor, I'll let you take it from there.
Certainly. So in reviewing the, the process that Borough has engaged in thus far with respect to the codification of ordinances. And during the transition with my predecessor Lisa Coyne, I think there may have been some mixed or cross signals rather in terms of the status that the Borough was at with respect to the codification. Very briefly, the Borough Code has a rather quirky procedure that must be followed when enacting an ordinance which recodifies the ordinances. And the process is that the ordinance must be formally introduced to council and the rest of the public at a public meeting 30 days prior to enactment. And then 15, not less than 15 days prior to enactment, the Borough is required to publish a notice of introduction in the newspaper. Somewhat similar to how you advertise other ordinances. In this case, the, the codification ordinance, that is ordinance number 1170, has not been formally introduced at a council meeting. So my suggestion is that we use tonight's meeting as the formal introduction. The, and then I would request that council direct the Borough Manager, myself to publish a notice of introduction in accordance with the Borough Code in anticipation of council taking formal action at its March 16th meeting to approve that ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that, that procedure.
Okay, so my, my question is, just as a matter of process, we would add that information to the item that's already on the agenda? Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so I would, I would suggest amending the first agenda action item to essentially read a formal introduction of ordinance 1170 for the recodification of the Borough ordinances. And then discussion and consideration by council to direct Borough Manager and Solicitor to advertise the notice of introduction in accordance with a section 33 oh 1.5 of the Borough Code. And if you need me to send that via email, Roger, I can do that.
Yeah, please do that. Cause I, I got 33 oh 1.5 Borough Code and that's all I've got written down right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Every lesson.
I'll make them, I'll make the motion if that makes any difference.
All right.
Actually, I have a copy of that motion because the Solicitor reached out to me as Chair of the Committee. So I can read it when it's officially required, if that's what the President would like.
That's correct. All right. So we will just add that as an approval of an addition to the agenda. So Mr. Miller has, am I correct, has made the motion? And Mr. Anthony has seconded it. Unless I go to Sarah to that.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And we will add that to the agenda first item. Okay. All right. So now we need to make a motion to approve the agenda. You didn't have anything else, is that correct, Roger?
That's correct.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the agenda now with the amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second?
Second.
Wow, I got three seconds. We give that one to Mr. Anthony. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the agenda is approved. Action items before Borough Council, Mr. Sazersky.
I will defer to Councilman Anthony to read this since he has it already in an email.
Formal introduction of proposed ordinance 1170 recodifying the Borough Council Borough's Code of Ordinances and discussion of possible action directing the Borough Manager and Solicitor to advertise a notice of introduction in accordance with section 33 oh 1.5 of the Borough Code.
I'll second Mr. Anthony's motion.
There we go. So Mr. Anthony makes the motion, Mr. Miller seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Discussion on possible action to award the bid for the pool coating project.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. A second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
That was Mr. Booker who got in ahead of you there, Mr. Pelman. Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, if I may give a little background.
Yep, please.
So as counsel may be aware, you know, I think it was late last year, we discussed the potential of, you know, putting an epoxy pool paint coating on the pool, which is a step up from what we do kind of normally here on a annual basis. So we did bid the project and fortunately RJR Engineering is also the same firm that is doing the current pool work. So that makes coordination and kind of, you know, putting it under one shop easy for us. We did also bid it in two pieces, if you will, a base bid, which is the two pools that we're currently doing work on, which is the main pool and the waiting pool. And then we also bid an ad alternate for the competition pool. So if you were to choose to just go with the base bid, that came in at $57,500 for those two pools that we're doing work on currently. Or you can also choose to award both the base bid and the alternate. And the alternate was an additional $22,350 for a grand total of $79,850 if you so choose to do that direction. So I would recommend that any motion that's made would include the decision on the alternate.
Just a good question as to why the bids are so stunning.
Yeah. So you would, I, I think we had two, two players out there that just kind of threw some numbers at it with the hope that they would get the bid. I was, you know, offline told from RJR that they were very aggressively pursuing on that particular project simply because they're out here, they're already here. And then also that they, the, the numbers that they had provided, if you recall, as a change order to their current contract, just for budgeting, were more in line with those numbers that they provided in the bid as opposed to the, you know, $165,000 range. So also those two firms are, they're subs of subs of subs. So they're, they're basically general contractors that use other labor. RJR uses their own labor. So that's the best I can offer at this point.
I have a question in regards to the, the coating itself. If I remember correctly from the previous bid tabulations, if we add this coating to the surface, we have to get a pool cover. Is that correct?
No. So we had discussed previously the potential of plastering the pool and that is what required the pool cover. This we will still be, I was remiss in mentioning that we are removing all the existing coatings. So there's like four or five coats of, you know, various paint buildup over the years that we will be taking off down to clean concrete. We will have to do some repairs, which will be additional to this. So we, it's prudent to budget some additional monies with the joints and some other things. And, you know, then we'll recoat the pool or pools as the case may be.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
What is the manager's recommendation in terms of what fits within our budget?
RJR's bid. And I think that would have to be included in the, the motion along with whether or not to go with the
Yeah, I was going to ask you. You also recommended the, the option, the alternate.
Yeah, I, I think what we're the Olympic pool is probably one of the quicker ones to paint. It doesn't use the special, what they call saucy paint. Saucy paint or whatever it's called. It's the stuff that has a real rubber based coating to it and it really it's not that bad. The, the other one, the, the large pool and the kiddie pool, they both are, are pretty bad as far as getting the paint. If it doesn't dry completely, it gets on bathing suits. We get a lot of complaints about it. The prices that are on there are probably six to seven years worth of painting of the pool. And if that, that has a lifespan, Greg, I think that we said at one time almost 10 years.
Yeah, they, they quote seven to 10 and it's, you know, obviously based on a lot of factors, but you, you could very well break even, you know, with, with just painting it every year.
Correct. And that's, that's, that's based on last, on 2019 year prices.
Another issue too is with the buildup of paint that's on there now, eventually as you paint, say you painted seven more years of the current, you know, the current coating, you're going to have problems with it adhering as you go down the road. And it's just, you know, eventually you're going to have to kind of bite the bullet here and, you know, blast everything off and clean it up anyway around. So.
So is the motion to include the Olympic pool or not to include the Olympic pool?
I think that needs clarified, Mr. President.
It does need to be clarified, Mr. President. So it's, RJR is the lowest responsible bidder, both based upon the base bid and the base bid with the alternate. And so the discussion item for council, I think is two part is whether or not to move forward with the, the project based on the base bid and whether or not the alternate should be added in.
Thank you. And the reason I brought it up is my, my feeling about it personally is if you have the people there, it'll probably be a lot less expensive to do that now than if we were to put it off a year or two or three, it'd probably triple in price to come in just to do that one pool when they're already there. I don't know. Greg, can you speak to that?
You're absolutely correct. So, you know, obviously a lot of what we carry in a contract, just to have a contract, bonds, insurance, mobilization, all that stuff. You know, it has a cost to it. So as you mentioned, Gary, like, you know, if you did it by itself, it would be, I don't know about three times, but it would certainly, it could be double, I would think for sure. And I think that, you know, for the cost benefit component of it, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it now or you're not going to do it at all for seven years.
So I would amend my motion to include that we would accept the bid from RJR with the alternative with the Olympic pool. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
Or a total bid of $79,850.
Right. And I think Joe, you seconded that, am I correct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll still second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion on possible action to authorize replacement of a federal panel box at the Highway Department. Believe I included two bids in your packets. I was expecting a third one. We did not get one in, in time to get it out to you. The, the two bids are not that far off as far as the base work goes. There is one that has an addition to it. And we have not received the third bid yet. I will defer to council on what they want to do with this.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get a motion first and then we'll have some discussion. Do we hear a motion? And I'll talk. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, John?
Could you watch?
Thank you. Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded and now it's discussion. I have a question actually, and you've kind of touched on a little bit, Roger. The two bids. One includes, it mentions another panel or something. Is that included in, in the Ruth bid too? Or I'm confused why one shows that and one, the other doesn't.
No, it does not. It, it, because it was found when the first guy was there to give his bid, there was stuff in front of the second panel box, which is actually constructed of wood. And then when they moved the stuff away from there, when they're, in their process of cleaning up before the second guy came to, to give his bid, that's when they found that second panel box. Which is actually, it's, it's quite frightening, some of the stuff that we're finding at, at the highway garage. This, this panel box is made out of wood. The, the guy said he wasn't, he didn't, he wasn't worried about coming back. He would look at it when he got there and give us a price then. We tried to tell him that's not how it works, but still waiting on the third, third bid on this, but with the numbers as low as what they are, this is, this is a safety issue. I'm sure everybody is aware of Kramer's Brothers Glass. This was similar to the situation they had down there.
Yeah, I, I get all that. What I don't get is, is the Ruth bid going to address that wooden box too or not?
No. The first one, no.
Well then, it seems like we have to get, we have, we have to get the proper quote then from all the people, all the people that bid.
Correct. And I'm, like I said, I'm missing a third quote also.
Now, my question for Mr. Cassidy is do we have to receive three quotes or only go out for three, only ask for three quotes?
The Borough is required to solicit three telephonic quotes. And if, if the Borough is unable to secure three quotes, you simply need to have a memorandum kept in the file as to the efforts to solicit the three quotes. And to be clear, there's no requirement under the Borough Code to award this contract the lowest quote. It's a little different than competitive bidding. There may be reasons why you go with a higher quote for whatever reason. But from a, from a practical standpoint, a fiduciary duty standpoint, as long as you're comparing apples to apples, it usually makes fiduciary sense to award it to the lowest quote.
So I guess we have two options. One is we can table it and wait for an apples to apples comparison. Or if the situation is so dire, you know, we could award it to the person who had quoted us for both. Being responsible, we don't know what the other one is going to come in at. So we couldn't really award it for something. We don't know what the cost will be.
So Roger, is your, would your, were we to do this, would your plan be to contact JL Ruth to give a quote on the other box as well? So we do have an apples to apples comparison.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do. Yep.
Right? Can, can we do that in with some expediency so that we can address this at our next meeting and get this moving?
We will do that. Yeah. And I'll, I'll see if I can get the third guy to give his, his quote in here and at least get in and take a look at it. Even if he doesn't want to bid on it.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, it's been a motion to table. We don't need a second on that. I believe we do still have to vote on it though, right? So, Mrs. Agerton? Or I mean, sorry, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. I got my Sarah's mixed up there. Sorry. Okay, so we will get that information out and move as quickly as we can to remedy this issue. Okay, next item, please.
Discussion on possible action on the service agreement with the redevelopment authority for the County of Cumberland for the Downtown Services Program Services Manager.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Miller? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion on possible action to approve expenditures from all funds for the period beginning January 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2021. For the fire fund, $22,646. General fund, $143,934.46. The highway fund, $11,976.14. The pool fund, $515.16 and zero from the capital fund.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. And we need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries and the bills are paid. Thank you. It's this time in our meeting where we open the floor for citizens' comments. Are there any comments? Seeing none and hearing none. Is there any other business? We'll start with Glenda.
No, sir.
Thank you. Roger?
Uh, no, sir. Just everybody try to stay warm and keep your heads down for the snow. It's stupid groundhog.
Mrs. Agerton.
Um, just a reminder to everyone, it is February, it's Black History Month. So, you know, just remember that as we go through February to honor a lot of our figures that may not have been mentioned in our history textbooks and to participate actively in honoring them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Thank you. Mr. Anthony?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Booker?
I just, again, I'd like to echo my, uh, uh, appreciation to the Highway Department, uh, with their clearing of the roads after this, uh, snow this past weekend. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Nothing.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pellman?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Um, Solicitor Cassidy?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Thank you. Chief Neff?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Myers?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Ritter?
Nothing, sir, thank you. Am I getting through?
You are.
Oh, my golly.
Great to hear your voice.
I'm on Windows ten. Oh, get to be such a big boy.
You're a technological wizard, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're busy opening up sidewalks and salting sidewalks downtown and, uh, uh, by the way, Holy Spirit had, uh, COVID shots last week. Just call in and go get one, so it's, Holy Spirit does have the vaccine. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Rogalski?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Mrs. Martin?
Uh, you, you should be getting your ethics forms in the mail. Please return them.
Yes, I got mine today, thank you. And I'm, I'm pleased to say I was able to get my first, uh, COVID vaccine shot. I had to go to Lewistown Hospital to get mine. At the time, we, we, uh, tried to go everywhere in Cumberland County, there wasn't any place that we could get one and we found a number and got one, thought it was up there. And I might, I might add a little, a little humor to this to, not to, uh, uh, at all diminish the seriousness of the, of the virus, but, um, I went through a, a Chick-fil-A drive-through the other day and I said to the, the person, ironically, because this came up in the news this morning, uh, ironically said to the person giving the food out, I said, you know, you guys should run this vaccine distribution because you do such a great job of getting tons of cars through in no time flat. And you know whose car I'm in. I mean, you know my name before I even drive up there. So here we go on the news this morning, uh, a county somewhere in Michigan or Minnesota or somewhere hired the local manager of the Chick-fil-A to help them, uh, coordinate the effort to give the shots. So I think that's kind of humorous, but, uh, it is difficult to find places to get them. Hopefully that's gonna turn around soon. So I get to go back to Lewistown again on February the twentieth to get number two and I'm really anxious to do that, so, uh,
And I'll, I'll do an, an addendum since we don't have nature. Um, they did update the PA website today to get the vaccines. They, um, released their algorithm, so you should be getting a more accurate picture of who has the vaccine shot for you.
Very good. So unless I hear anything else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for helping out tonight. Good meeting. And we hope everybody stays happy and healthy and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.